Thursday, we are about to begin our last school committee meeting of the 2021 school year. We have a fairly short agenda, so thank you for joining us. And we will begin our meeting promptly at seven oh one. And we will begin with, oh, we just lost Rosemary. Hopefully she can sign back in. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can join me in unmuting ourselves and stating the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thanks so much, team. Remember to mute yourselves. Awesome. So I have a motion to commend the school committee minutes from the last meeting to the report.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting held on November eighteen.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Awesome. Thank you. Up next, we have this public comments section. Veronica, do we have any comments submitted for today's meeting?
Yes, I have three comments to read. Well, three comments from two people. First is from City Council member Leo Robinson, who could not be with us tonight. Dear school committee members, I would like to apologize for my absence tonight. I have a prior commitment. It is my daughter's opening night at MIT's basketball game. I would like to extend an invitation to the Chelsea High School girls' basketball team to attend the game on Saturday. If it is possible, I would love to work out arrangements. And then his second comment is, Dear school committee members, Superintendent Almia Beta and football coach Michael Jackson. Coach Michael Jackson and his staff players and cheerleaders have had a great winning season. I see big things coming your way. As the most impressive outlook was the amount of players our team has, eighty-one. I attended the Thanksgiving away game and was impressed to see the many former football players that attended the game as well. Good luck and I am already looking forward to next year. And our second comment is from Karen Pazos, Pazos, I'm sorry, seventy-eight Spencer Ave, Chelsea. Dear Dr. Beta, my name is Karen Pazos. I have been a Chelsea resident since nineteen eighty-five. Today, I am a parent of three who is also a member of Chelsea High School School Site Council. Every participating member has played a most crucial and supporting role. In a way, we have effectively advocated for all students' educational interests. Jay Velas, a Chelsea High School.
In a way, we have effectively advocated for all students.
Jay Velas, a Chelsea High School parent liaison, has always been tremendously supportive and a most valuable resource to our families. I had an issue involving my child's shyness as a new student at Chelsea High School. Jay reassured my child that he was welcome. He praised my child by fully engaging him. Jay encouraged my child to walk through the open door and give attention to the great opportunities surrounding him. Jay was very responsive by listening well and building great trust. My child would not achieve this level of comfort without him. Jay Velas has always been very passionately connected to our community. He maintains great focus on our students and their families. Because of this, it is important to note that Jay's continued support and positive contribution impacts students' personal growth and academic success. Needless to say, Jay Velas has assisted all Chelsea students and their families in acquiring greater confidence in developing specific skills to engage and understand their world. More specifically, Jay shares himself with others by always demonstrating great respect and personal wisdom. Sincerely, Karen Pazos.
Thank you, Vero, for reading those comments. Alrighty, team, before moving on to the presentations, we'd like to take a few moments and thank a few of our members who will not be joining us for the next meeting. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Beta or Veronica, who will be presenting a few words and a special plaque.
Okay, okay. So I'm gonna start off with Marisol. And so, Marisol, this is her last school committee meeting, and we have a plaque for her. And it says, "With deep gratitude to Marisol Santiago for commitment and dedication to Chelsea Public Schools." And we just wanted to say thank you, Marisol, for your service to our Chelsea community and your undying commitment to Chelsea and to our schools and to Chelsea Public Schools, and we're so grateful. And so we just wanted to publicly say thank you. And so that is to Marisol, and we'll make sure she gets her plaque. And then, the next plaque, I don't know if you guys can see it, is to our Chair, Ms. Kelly Garcia. And it says, "In appreciation for your dedication as School Committee Chair One for the school year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one." So, Kelly, Ms. Garcia, we thank you so much for your commitment to the community of Chelsea, to Chelsea Public Schools, and to the work that we've done during and in the middle of a pandemic. Thank you for leading us, and thank you for your leadership, and we're so grateful, and we just wanted to say thank you. So we'll make sure you get this.
Thank you, thank you.
And then, we have a plaque to Ms. Rosemarie Carlisle. And Ms. Rosemarie Carlisle is retiring and leaving, and this is her last school committee meeting, and we will miss her. So this is the Outstanding Service Award to Ms. Rosemarie Carlisle, and deep appreciation of your twenty-seven years of outstanding service and dedication to the students and families of Chelsea Public Schools. December second, twenty-twenty-one. So Ms. Carlisle, this is for you. And we thank you for your commitment to Chelsea Public Schools, the city of Chelsea, and just how you have served our students and teachers and families for twenty-seven years. We're so incredibly grateful, and I know you've seen many superintendents and leadership teams come and goes, and I am so fortunate that I've gotten the opportunity to work with you, and you will be missed. And so we wish you all the best in your next season. And so, again, we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and we're just so grateful. So I know colleagues want to say something, so we'll open up the floor, and I'll stop sharing so we can see everybody.
Ms. Velas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rosemarie, you got me here all choked up. Come on. What can I say? I'm still in shock. I don't believe that Rosemarie is leaving us. It's bittersweet. She's been a force. You keep us on our toes. And who's gonna say my last name, Rosemarie? Because every time you catch your name, but you call me Velas, Velasquez, Valdez, but never Velas. But only Rosemarie could do that. Nobody else tried to mispronounce my name, only she's able. I've enjoyed my time working alongside you. Thank you for being my roommate when I went to Denver to represent Chelsea. Glad we got to experience that together, and I wish you all the best, and we will truly miss you. And good luck. But you still could show up and put your two cents in during public comments. So, you know, those are always open for you. And I just want to thank Marisol for her work as well on the committee. You'll be missed too, because you were so thorough. You asked so many questions, and you wanted to make sure that you truly understand the policies and procedures. And you apologized a lot because you did that, but why not? You were just trying to make sure that you were serving your constituents to the best of your ability, so there was nothing wrong with that, and we will miss you as well. And good luck in your endeavors, and I know, Marisol, this won't be the end of you here in our city. You're still very involved, and you care truly, and we appreciate you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Velas. Anyone else? As I flip through the screen on my phone.
Hi, I'm sure I would like to say some words.
Go ahead, Ms. Alfaro.
Thank you to Ms. Carlisle, which I always have hard time pronouncing the last name. It's the other way around. And thank you for the many years that you have served the city of Chelsea at the school committee. And also, Marisol, it was a pleasure working with you on this experience, having you at the school committee. And good luck to the two of you, and we know we're gonna see each other here in Chelsea.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to jump in here?
Anybody else want to make me cry? Go ahead.
I do, I do.
Oh, you do, you do. Thanks. Thanks, Kelly.
Rosemarie, I will truly miss you. You were always a listening ear, and as the youngest member during my time when I first ran, I knew I could always count on you to hear me out and express my concerns. And you reassured me. You treated me like your daughter, so I will forever miss that feeling on the board. Marisol, to you, I aspire to ask as many questions as you. You are always thinking of the things that we should be thinking about, that should be on the forefront of our brains. And you truly will be missed on the board, and even though it was a short term, you really made an impact, and I want you to know that, the both of you. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for serving our students and for serving and proudly representing your districts and your constituents. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Alrighty, team. Let's move on. If you don't see any other hands, if you want, go ahead and, in case I missed you. But if not, we can move on. Dr. Beta, now I turn it back to you for our presentations.
So the presentation tonight is diversifying our workforce, and I am super excited to have this presentation. And we have Ms. Christine Lee, our HR Director, and Dr. Erin Jennings presenting tonight, our Equity Officer. And I will go ahead and let them take it from here, and we are just so excited to share the work that we've been doing.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. I'm gonna share my screen. Alright, so today, Dr. Jennings and I are proudly going to present our work that we have done in supporting and retaining our diverse educators. Everyone has done an incredible job hiring and recruiting and supporting thus far. And so, for those who do not know me, I am Christine Lee. I'm the Director of HR. And Dr. Jennings and I will kind of be going back and forth throughout the presentation, and so I will hand it off to him.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Chairwoman, committee members, it's such a great joy to present to you all our presentation. I do just have a slight problem. I don't know who set us up to go behind the congratulations, the appreciation. So it's, you know, a sober moment now to presentations, but we're gonna do our best to get through this. Thank you so very much. So on our agenda today, we definitely want to kind of give you a quick skinny of the work that we've been doing that's near and dear to all of our hearts here in our school district. We want to open it up with our scholars, our students, to give a frame up. Ms. Lee is going to do a deep dive on the TTP program, then sharing the mentorship program and our DESI partnerships. I'm gonna come back and do an overview of the current work and our further next steps for affinity groups. We're gonna end on staff data, do a closing, and question and answer for our team here. So before Ms. Lee, you hit Nasir, I wanted to just make mention that one of the things that the cabinet, what we hold to be true is leading with our student voices. I want to give kudos to Ms. Cecilia from our last meeting, where you articulated clearly the essence and the reason why, reasons why teachers of color are not just needed but wanted and valued and appreciated in our school district. And so we wanted to kind of echo, double-click your sentiments with two of your colleagues, Nasir Adams and Javen Diaz. Ms. Lee?
Having teachers of color in my community means the world to me. It means a lot of teachers are more understanding and more comfortable to be themselves, allowing students to be themselves as well, because teachers understand the struggle that a lot of students go through, and students are more inclined or more open to talk about it and students still feel the pressure to need to prove themselves or just not be able to be themselves around, be themselves because they feel like teachers have this stigma of them and they have to live up to it or rather defy it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Javen. I'm from Chelsea High School, tenth grade.
Why is it important for you to have teachers of similar identities as yours?
It's important to have teachers of similar identities because they know where we're at. They've been in our position before. They, teachers of color especially, because they teach us how to empower ourselves. They teach us how to look out for ourselves because they know what type of situation we are in, especially as people of color.
Thank you. I have to admit, in my faith tradition, we often say a child will lead them, and I think our students did a wonderful job of framing up what Ms. Lee and I will be sharing as we seek to retain and support our diverse educators in our school district. And forgive me, Ms. Creighton, I didn't acknowledge you. I do apologize. Another one of our excellent students here that's on the call with us. It's Lee.
Having teachers of color in my community means the world to me. It means a lot of teachers are more understanding.
This, one of the, not only do our scholars articulate the value, the need, the necessity of this, but I also want to highlight that it is point three within our strategic priorities. And I just, to read it, is recruit, support, and retain diverse and high-quality teachers and leaders. So I just want to say that this work, what we're doing, sits within these priorities. And so I am just doubly excited to be know that we're in line and in sync as we push, move, advance our district forward. Thank you, Ms. Lee.
So one of the exciting pieces that we've been sharing with you for the last few years is our Teacher Pathway Program. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with our Pathway Program, this all came about in twenty nineteen. We received DESI funding to support educators of color in our district. And when we thought about what kind of strategy made the most sense, we looked at our exit survey data, and we recognized that a lot of our teachers who left Chelsea did not have any ties to the community, and they left for personal reasons. And so our theory of action was, if we invest in people in our community who know our students, who look like our students, who have walked the walk, just as our students have, then we will be able to not only diversify our workforce, but also have educators who are committed to Chelsea because they are already from here, they have ties to this community. And so, over the last three years, we have developed various pathways. So one of our largest pathways is the Paraprofessional to Teacher Pipeline Program, where we support through scholarships that we've been awarded by DESI to help our paras to obtain their master's degrees in education so that they can become a teacher. And we also have teachers who currently do not go through a teaching program, and they're provisionally licensed teachers who are also working on their masters to obtain their licensure to continue their journey as a teacher and beyond. We also, this past year, started our Parent-to-Paraprofessional Pipeline. We were very excited to find out that we, you know, we had fifteen slots for our first cohort, and we had over thirty applicants for our Parent-to-Para Pathway Program. And that excitement and eagerness was just so exciting for us. And so this is something that I think we'll have for a very long time, and we've already seen the impact of our parents working in our schools and supporting our students. We also had started our Teacher-to-Administrator Pathway Program this year through the Peron Sizer Institute. And so we have a few current teachers who are aspiring as school leaders and administrators that we're very excited about. We also have high school students who are studying to become a teacher. And so that will take some time, and so right now, our students are either in their sophomore or junior year. And so we'll see how they do, and we're excited to have them return to Chelsea. And something that we are going to be starting is our High School-to-Paraprofessional Pipeline. So students who graduate from Chelsea High School or COA or CVLA who are not attending a four-year college and they're sticking around in the area and looking for a job, we want to recruit them and hire them through our Para Pathway so that they can earn their degrees and hopefully pursue a career in education. And one thing that I wanted to highlight was our Communications Director. He had provided a wonderful clip in the Chelsea, in our news feeds. And so you can click on that, because I'm having trouble with my clicking today. But we will also send that to you after this presentation. One of our biggest retention, our main retention strategy, because once we bring in our educators, our new educators, especially our educators of color, we want to retain them. And so our mentoring program is a large part of that retention strategy. And so this year, we did some work to revamp the mentoring program, and there has been a focus on building relationships and connecting with one another because we know that when you are supported and you know that someone cares about you, who's a colleague and there to help you, you are more likely to feel connected, feel supported, and want to grow and develop in the community and the organization that you're in. And just a quick highlight of the awards that we've received over the last three years. We've received over six hundred thousand dollars since twenty nineteen, and you can see the breakdown below in the bullets. And ultimately, this has also allowed us to be a part of a professional learning community. And so we are one of ninety-eight districts in the state of Massachusetts. There's five hundred eighty-three districts in Massachusetts. And so we're really excited to be a part of this. And actually, one of the ideas for the Parent-to-Para Program, we learned through this network. And so we're plugged in to this professional development community that we've gained a lot of resources from as well. And one of our, we wanted to highlight our Pathway Program participants. And so one is Martha Valentine. She is a paraprofessional at the Early Learning Center. She's been with Chelsea for over twenty years, and she's just so excited to serve this community, and she's working on her master's degree currently, and we're hoping to get her in a teaching role next year. We also have Cindy Ortiz. She is part of our Parent-to-Para Pathway. Her students, her children go to Chelsea Public Schools, and she reflects on how important it is for her to serve our students as someone from Chelsea who has gone through life like our students have.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. As Ms. Lee just shared, we're using efforts from our state, DESI, our central office with the mentoring program, and another central office initiative that we're, we'll be using to retain our diverse educators through affinity groups. And so just to share with you our definition, affinity group is a collection of individuals who share similar identities, interests, experiences, and/or goals. And the question be, why racial affinity groups? Just know that they create a safer space to be vulnerable in sharing experiences, asking questions, and learning with others within a similar identity. I know I've spoken to many of our school committee members about affinity groups in our school district, so I'm excited to share that we have one affinity group at our high school that was erected last spring. It's led by two of our amazing educators. They appreciate the work. They love the work they're doing. Last spring, I was able to attend their end-of-year breakfast, and it was a space that was full of joy, pride, and commitment to our school community, to Chelsea High School. So I was delighted to be in that number. I would also say that based on the model that we operationalize at the high school, I was able to have a Harvard Grad-School of Education Equity Inclusion Fellow, Ms. Kimberly Lewis. Her and I and our two leads at the high school will be using their model to spread, to create more affinity groups at our respective schools as well as district-wide affinity groups. We're definitely excited about that, and I also wanted to make mention that I will, my office, team of two, will be providing support as much as possible to our respective schools and district affinity groups. We're definitely excited about this work.
So some of the data to reflect the work that has happened, especially right here, you'll see our principal, assistant principal demographics. You'll see the steady increases that we've been able to make since twenty nineteen that we're very proud of. And for our teachers and administrators, we have used nineteen twenty as the baseline. And so looking at twenty twenty-one to see what the percentage increase was of overall staff diversity, we were able to increase it by sixty-six percent. of overall staff diversity, we were able to increase it by sixty-six percent. And for administrator diversity from nineteen-twenty to 2021 was also sixty-six percent. And for central office, from nineteen-twenty to 2021, we increased by fourteen percent. And some other pieces of data that I wanted to share with you that is not on the slide. We currently have thirty-eight educators in our TPP program. And we have a overall sixty-four percent hiring percentage in Chelsea. So that represents paras who became teachers and also parents who became paras. And we, let's see. So last year, we, or this past hiring season, so this school year, we hired one hundred and seventy-one teachers. And that, we were, the staff diversity this year is thirty-five percent. And last year, we hired about ninety teachers and it increased to thirty-four percent. And I don't have the data exactly from nineteen-twenty, but from what I recall, it was about a fifteen percent diversity rate when we started this work. And so there's, it's just been tremendous increases that we've seen with the work that we're doing and we're very excited about.
I have to admit, this is wonderful news. This is great news of the work that we've been doing on the leadership with Dr. Beta. I have to also say that our students have shared their voices, their voice of their desire to have teachers of color in our school district. Our families, our communities want to be engaged in this work. And as a result, central office under the direction of Dr. Beta, we are committed to this work. And we believe the evidence we've showed you on this presentation is a marker of our commitment to doing this work.
So we're happy to take any questions if you have any at this time.
Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
Yeah, just want to thank, first of all, thank you so much for this overview. I want to commend you on the work that you're doing on this. It's such an important issue. You know, as we've heard from the students, we know this from the research, right? It's like from everywhere we hear that this is important. So I'm really glad to see that we've made this such a top priority for us. And I'm just really excited to see how we continue improving on this as we expand our teaching staff in the coming years, right? As we're getting more resources. I do have one question. I was wondering if you could just expand a little bit more on the high school, the para pathway? I'm just curious, kind of like what, what are the minimum requirements to be a paraprofessional? And then kind of, you know, are they, like, what is it? Like emergency or not emergency, like temporary paraprofessionals until they get a licensure? I know the teaching one fairly well, but I don't quite understand the paraprofessional that well.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for the baseline requirements and minimum requirements for a paraprofessional is either sixty-four college credits or passing the para protest. And so there's a certain score you have to achieve to obtain the para protest. But there is a fairly high passing rate for that test. You really, it's very basic knowledge from high school level curriculum. And so there's a test that you take. And if you achieve that score, then you're able to become a paraprofessional. And so with our parent to para pipeline, we did have some parents who either didn't meet the credit requirement or they're, they had not completed formal education in the States. And so they actually went through a study program with assistance with the ILP to help them study and prepare for the test. And so in a few weeks, actually, our parents will be taking the para protest. And we as a district, we can administer it. So Rashida Abdul Musawira, who is a recruitment retention specialist, she's going to be helping to proctor these tests so that we can help get more folks certified so that they can become paraprofessionals. So that would be how our high school students who graduate and they might not have any credits would be able to become paraprofessionals.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Good job as always, Erin and Christine. You always bring a good presentation to the table and you're doing a good job getting this diversity program off the table and taking care of the kids in the high school and throughout the schools. Thank you both very much for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Carla Jimenez.
Yeah, this is Marisol. I just wanted to echo. Got a second? Just wanted to echo gratitude for this type of work and the commitment. And it clearly shows this has been, you know, something that from all levels, you guys have been really focused on. And it really, really shows. I love the thoughtfulness of all these different layers and steps and just hearing more about, you know, even thinking about how this can be actually accessible to people in our community. I just, it's just really thoughtful and very well done. So I'm just really proud. Thank you guys for making it possible for our city. It's wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Any other comment?
No, I just, you know me, when I hear the students, it's always impactful. And listening to Javion saying, yes, he wants to see more people that look like him and Nasir is very important. You know, it's intimidating even for our parents where they're walking into schools and they're not seeing anybody that looks like them. And also, you know, there's educators that may not be of color and truly sympathize, but they won't fully understand unless they've been through it. So there's always going to be that little barrier there. So I appreciate that, that we're listening to our students and letting them have a voice in what we're doing in our district. I know, you know, as a parent, when I was in Chelsea Public Schools, walking in, you know, there were some colored people working, but not really the teachers. And then, you know, I always felt that I had to speak up for everybody in my kid's classroom. And I guess this is why I'm here on school committee after so many years. Because I took the, you know, I took it upon myself. I'm like, no, they need to listen to us and to really know what's going on. So I'm glad that this work is going on. And then I just wanted to say about those affinity groups as well. So as we're working on retaining our teachers, are we going to be checking in with them just to see how they're doing, how they're feeling? I know things get crazy. We're so busy and it's just work, work, work that we don't take a minute just to stop and say, hey, how you doing? Is everything okay? You know, so I would like to know if something like that is implemented, not just waiting maybe when they're going to get evaluated and then they're going to hear, well, we saw this, this and this, and you didn't do this, this. You know, just trying to take that time just to check in. So how would that work in this whole plan?
So we have started with our mentors. Actually, last week, we had asked all of our school leaders to check in with every single educator before the end of December. And that, and I also had asked all the mentors, the mentor leads, to ask all the mentors to connect with them before the semester ends. And, you know, we are also, from my office, we're going to be sending a stay survey, just trying to understand how our new educators are feeling in general and providing that information and data to our principals as well. And so that's, those are some of the steps that we're taking to make sure that our school leaders and our mentors and leads are all working together to support our new educators.
Ms. Velez, I would also mention that I am actually walking alongside a number of our new educators from meeting in Common Grounds Coffee Shop to coming across, interacting with new educators in the barber shop. So I am doing whatever I can do within my sphere of influence to make sure our new educators, to get our new educators of color, know that they are welcome, wanted here and that they have the support from me and my office.
That's great to hear, but I hope this goes beyond just our educators. Because, you know, and the reason I'm mentioning this because I've heard from other people in the district that are not educators. So they're kind of feeling a little left out. Like, you know, all the focus is on the educators and making sure they're taken care of. So, you know, I would love to know that you guys are also reaching out to noneducators in our district. Because I always say we're one body and if one is unhappy, we're not going to be working as well. So I'm just taking the time and talking to them because, you know, everybody's important. And I mean, knows I love my little crossing guard. By the high school, I'm always watching out for him. Are you okay? So, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody is feeling the same way.
Ms. Velez, I fully agree. And I think, I'm not going to speak for the cabinet, central office, but I believe and I've seen is that all of us have operationalized getting to know our colleagues by name, strength and story. From the crossing guards right in front of City Hall to our security officers. One particular security guard often asked me when I'm going to bring him his hot cocoa from the Clark Ave to me interacting with one of our security officers who have locks at the high school. So yes, we are getting to know everyone by name, strength and story and not just our educators in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. Team, I, my heart is just so happy. You know, I've been, I'm an educator and an educator of color. And I, I'm just so happy this is happening finally in our district. And I brag about our school system all the time. And I'm truly honored to have this team here with us and really bringing our student voice into these meetings and into our policymaking and policy changes and being genuine and authentic about including their voices. I mean, to the point where their voices were included in the PowerPoint, right? I mean, we serve our students, we are here for our students. And Erin and Christine and to all the educators who are watching us and staff, thank you for valuing their voice and for including their voices. Because without them, we wouldn't have a job. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here, right? And we really investing in our students and our teachers will yield amazing results. And I cannot wait to continue seeing those tremendous results. So thank you, team, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Ms. Rusty, I had another question I was wondering.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, couldn't see.
I wasn't sure if you knew that I had to put my hand down and up. So I, first of all, just jokingly, are we requiring folks to get haircuts in Chelsea so that Erin can go see everybody at the barber shop? Because we should. But anyway, my actual question, I'm not sure if we're tracking this, but I'm just curious if the teachers of color that we're bringing in are primarily Chelsea folks? And if we're, like, are we tracking those overlapping things? Or is that something that, you know, we could pull up but aren't actively doing?
Now, so most of our, I don't have exactly how many people are in, are from Chelsea in our pathway program. But I would, I would be fair to say at least sixty to seventy percent of them are from Chelsea. And so that is the group that we're tracking. I know that there might be other people from Chelsea that have been hired. I know, for example, last, so we have a partnership with TFA and they asked us if there's any recommendations. And so we work with the guidance counselor team to get a list of all the Chelsea alum. And we gave them that list to TFA. And as a result, we have a few people in TFA that are from Chelsea. And so we're kind of tackling it at all angles. But I will, I will try to tease out the data for at least our pathway program folks so that you can know exactly how many, at least from the pathway, are from Chelsea.
Great question, Mr. Jimenez. Awesome. Up next, I turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Beta.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And thank you to Dr. Jennings and Ms. Lee for a wonderful presentation. And we are working hard to really recruit and retain our diverse employees and at all angles, because it's not just one approach. We have to hit it in so many ways. And then when our employees get here, we want to make sure they stay and that they feel comfortable and that this is home. So just hitting all angles. So I just want to thank our wonderful team. And then all of the hiring managers, whether it's the principals or whether it's the department heads, doing their jobs too to make sure they're hiring and supporting. So we're just grateful we have a wonderful team and just really proud of the work that we're doing. And we still have work to do. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Mr. Michael Lovato, and he'll go over our indicators of success. So I'll stop sharing my screen so Mr. Lovato can share.
Thank you, Dr. Beta, and thank you, school committee. Give me one second, I will. All right. So I think it feels like we just went over this about a week ago on our last school committee. The numbers, you know, have changed. They're a little different, not significantly, but they are from last time we showed October. This time we're showing November. The two areas that we'll be going over are the district-wide daily attendance. We'll show our students who have dropped and then we'll show our mobility rate. Oops, sorry, my computer's a little sticky. Are you guys seeing the same weird movement I am or is it just on my side? Okay. So, sorry, Dr. Beta.
It's fine right now.
Okay. So November was added. You can see that, you know, as we highlighted last time, we're working with our high school for increasing and, you know, the attendance components. For seniors, we're still about seventy-two percent. And sorry, I'm going backwards this time instead of starting from grade one. And then we see our juniors remained about eighty-two percent with a slight increase at a point seven percent. And then so forth. You can see that it's pretty similar across the board with very little change. We are working diligently for, you know, at the high school for what those increase of attendance looks like. And I had several meetings today and I have a couple tomorrow too where we're also addressing what that looks like as well. Dr. Beta or the school committee members, if you have questions about this, I could pause or give you guys a few more minutes or I can move on to the mobility rate.
Ms. Lovato, I think, I think it's okay for you to keep going. But school committee members, if you have any questions, feel free to, feel free to jump in as I can see all the screen, the whole screen.
I'm getting there, I'm trying. All right, so we have the mobility rate. As you can see, you know, there is a couple of things that we're paying attention to. Elementary, you can see our numbers are staying steady. They, we did get about four more kids than we did last month. Middle school, you know, it did slow down a little bit. We picked in about fifteen kids last month to where we picked up about eight kids. And our disenrollment is about average on each one of these areas. The high school, we're staying steady. You know, we picked up forty-four kids, fifty-one last month. About twenty-four dropped, not dropped, but they disenrolled and where we were at about twenty-nine last month. And as you can see, in October, we picked up one hundred and thirteen kids. In November, we picked up ninety-seven. And yet our disenrollment numbers actually stayed identical. So I believe. So, um, I believe, uh, uh, Dr. Beta had mentioned today that we're back to pre-pandemic numbers, um, so we're back to where we were pre-pandemic, and our numbers, um, seem to be steady with nothing really too alarming that, uh, um, but we are watching the numbers very closely, um, to see what supports or how we need to work with our staff members and/or our children. Uh, with that, Dr. Beta, those are the areas that are due for the monthly indicators, um, so I stand for questions.
Um, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Lovato.
Go ahead, Ms. Velez.
Um, for the new incoming students, are these new, newly arrived, um, students coming into the states, or is it transfers, do we know?
It's a little bit of everything, uh, there are some newly arrived students, uh, we have been working with some of the middle schools on making sure that those kids were, you know, are placed appropriately, um, we are getting a few kids, nothing, um, out of the ordinary, um, from, you know, um, other countries, and then we have some minor movement, um, from one district to another.
Thank you.
Any other questions, team? Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Lovato.
Uh, Ms. Garcia, sorry, I was trying to unmute.
Go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Um, Mr. Lovato, thank you for your presentation again, um, and I was trying to look for the previous screen. Um, is there any updates on the VLA, CVLA, in terms of new amounts of students? Would that be also included in the reports going forward? Unless I'm looking at this wrong.
So, the, what we would have there, um, what this is showing is new to the district. Um, what the CVLA would show would be the students that are transferring from, say, the high school, middle school, or elementary. Um, if Dr. Beta and the school committee would like me to put the individual enrollments of schools, um, obviously, I can, I can put that, I can say that, uh, the CVLA has had, um, a slow but steady increase, which has been methodical. Um, we are, I believe, we hit nineteen, uh, students, um, I think just yesterday.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lovato, for also just, yeah, that reminder, um, yeah, never mind, that made sense after, I thought about it after I asked the question. Thank you, thank you.
Um, I, just going off of that question, I'm, uh, I don't know that we, I mean, I, I wouldn't necessarily ask for the enrollment for every single school, I, I am curious about the, the CVLA. Um, I don't know if other folks feel like it might be useful to have at least just that one, um, since it's kind of, you know, different, and, and also new, um, program that we have. I'm curious, especially, you know, thinking about the fact that we have, I, I forget exactly how many slots it was, um, but just, just thinking through that, making sure that, you know, if we, that way we can better track, you know, how we're using it and, and kind of where we are in terms of the capacity of the, of the program. Not seeing a huge, uh, swell of support in, in favor of having that.
Um, this is Maritola again, I do agree that we should be, like, as a school committee, you know, and obviously, it's my last meeting, so, to refer to y'all, but, um, I think it's important to make sure that, like, if there, there are ways to sort of, um, include some, some type of, of report back or tracking, right, in some way, I know that right now, as Ms. Lovato, you know, reminded me, we're looking at mobility and not necessarily enrollment for each particular school and stuff, but, um, it would be nice to, to get an understanding about, like, how things are going and, and hear from Dr. Albeta, you know, and other folks that are more closely involved at the Virtual Learning Academy, about how things are going, um, and I know there's a ton of opportunities and ways that you guys could do that, um, but I, as you all know, uh, that school is very close to my heart, um, and I'm very, very proud of the work that's happening there, so it might just be an opportunity maybe for, like, uh, some highlights, um, and if there's growth, I, I certainly feel in terms of tracking, in terms of growth in some programs, you know, but, um, I think that's in your hands now.
If I could just add, I wouldn't necessarily say to add every single school, but yeah, so for the high school, for those numbers, is that including COA? And so, at least to have COA on there and the virtual learning added to this list? Um, I think it would be helpful for us to see.
That's super helpful, team, uh, I'm sure we can, um, dive deep into, you know, a, a further conversation about, um, adding that, so thank you, Ms. Lovato, in advance, for collaborating with us on that. Great.
Thank you, I'll stop sharing my screen, and, um, uh, Dr. Beta, unless you need something else from me, I'm going to go ahead and close up.
Thank you, Ms. Lovato, and we'll work on, uh, the CVLA. Um, okay, so the next thing, or the next we have, as our, our student representative?
Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Creighton, and I am one of the student representatives for Chelsea High School. Thank you all so much for giving Cecilia and I the opportunity to share the news and concerns within our school. Last meeting, we mentioned the closure of some of the restrooms, resulting in all restrooms being opened again, and I want to share with you all that many students were very thankful to see this change. Personally, I have noticed less groups hanging out in the restrooms, and it is great. We are able to go to the closest restroom, knowing that we don't have to go around the school looking for the few that are open, but we have seen some problems with students and bathrooms that we, the students, are trying to solve, you have done your part, so it's time for us to do our part. I also want to give an, uh, an update regarding the senior class, many students have been working diligently on their college applications, and those who applied early will be receiving some admission decisions within the next couple of weeks. As a senior who is also going through the college application process, I am forever grateful for all the support from staff during this challenging process. I came to Chelsea High School in tenth grade, and it was not until coming to this school that I realized that college is what I want for myself and is achievable. Since the last meeting was just two weeks ago, and part of that time included Thanksgiving break, we don't have many updates, but we do want to speak upon the E policy, which is a concern for many students. The E policy is a policy implemented to help with attendance that states that after two unexcused absences in a quarter, the student will receive a letter E grade in their class. Although the motive is for a good reason, we believe that there may be some underlying negatives about the policy. Still being in a pandemic, we are required to take extra precautions to keep ourselves and others safe. This includes wearing a mask at school, social distancing, and staying home when presenting signs, when presenting symptoms of COVID-nineteen. With the flu season taking place, it may be harder for students to differentiate between common sickness symptoms and COVID-nineteen symptoms. There may be situations where students aren't sure to risk using one of the three days that their parents can write a note for, because they are experiencing a minor sickness symptom, or to go to school to save their grade, possibly putting their classmates and teachers at a risk. The fact that, um, missing school for a valid reason can negatively affect the student's transcript and future seems a little unfair, especially for circumstances that are not under their control. This also pertains to the rule that after three excused absences with a parent note, any additional absence with a parent note is then viewed as unexcused. We believe that absences with a parent note should not be limited to only three, it would be more beneficial to have those absences with a parent note to be viewed more closely, and then determine whether it is excused or not, depending on the individual circumstance. There is a variety of reasons why a student may not be able to go to school for a day or for a certain period of time. We know that the lack of attendance is something that is serious within the school, therefore, something is, something to consider is that the E policy may be contributing to the bad attendance. COVID-nineteen took a big toll on our mental health, some students may slack off, accepting that they already have an E. We ask that you consider revising the E policy and, and include students and parents in that revision. It is always an honor to hear about everything that goes into our school, and thank you all so much, I will pass it to Cecilia.
Hey, everyone, just to make sure, I just want to, like, see if everyone can hear me?
You're good.
Thank you, so, hi, everyone, again, it's nice to see everyone, uh, tonight, and I hope everyone is, like, doing well, and I just want to thank my beautiful friend Valerie for, you know, her update on the school this time, and I wanted to take some time to say something that has been in my heart for quite a while now, and I was like, I need to tell, like, I need to say it in here, because I know, I'm aware that a lot of people are watching it, and I just wanted to say it in here. So, our, as you know, our, our community is so full of amazing stories, and Chelsea, like, for me, is the, like, definition, like, the la- the living definition of community. Ever since I started going to Chelsea High, I have found myself, I started hearing a lot of diverse, beautiful stories, and I have met so, so many amazing people, so I just wanted to thank everyone that works at Chelsea Public Schools, educators that have taken the time to help a lot of students this year, nurses, they keep us healthy and safe, custodians, keeping our school clean and always helping, security that keep us safe, because, um, to keep us safe in order, Perry Lansons, amazing people, helpful people, just like our friend Jay Velez, I love him, he's amazing, um, lunch ladies, keeping our bellies full, Cleric Star was helping, social workers, guidance counselors, deans, sub principals, the IT members, and especially our paraprofessionals. I have seen a lot of paraprof- paraprofessionals lately, working so much, and that makes, that touches my heart so much, because they do their work with such an amazing heart, and I just wanted to, eh, I'm not only speaking for myself as a student, but I'm pretty sure I'm speaking for a lot of people that are, you know, going to Chelsea Public Schools, and I just wanted to say that I really thank all paraprofessionals from all the schools, not only from Chelsea, but all these schools in the US, and I just wanted to, like, you know, thank them, because I have noticed that they give their heart to those students, and it's so amazing to see the work they do every day, and it just really touches me a lot, and, like I said, if I, there's, if I could mention all the names, I would, but just because, you know, I don't know all of them, I just wanted to say all in general, to all of you that are here right now, to the people that are watching the live, and all the community, you know, out there, I just wanted to say that I'm really thankful for each one of us, and I'm really amazed to, like, you know, be part of this community, to be part of this committee, and I really wanted to thank every single one of you, and, you know, uh, thank you for everyone, you know, all the assistant principals that are there, helping students every day, it really is amazing to see the work they put in every day, and I know that, you know, it's really, it's been a really hard time for, like, everyone, especially staff from C, um, Chelsea Public Schools, but we as the students, we really appreciate all the work you put and the hard that you put in and the love for students, and thank you for being so understandable of what's been going on lately, and like Valerie mentioned, a lot of people were happy with the bathrooms being opened again, because I heard some feedback, they were like, oh my God, they, like, you know, they heard our voices, and they were like, you know, our voices were being heard, and you guys did something about it, and they were really happy, and like Valerie said, we were noticing some problems, but like I said, you guys did your part, so it's time for us to do our part, and, yeah, thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, and we appreciate, um, hearing from you and, um, listening to, uh, what is concerning our students, and so we will, we definitely take everything that you say to heart, and, um, want to make sure that we're, we're hearing your voices, because your voices are actually the most important, so thank you.
Um, excuse me, uh, sorry, Dr. Beta, I was just wondering, um, if Ms. Garcia, if we could add the, um, the E policy to our next policies and procedures meeting, just so we can, you know, talk through that and figure out, hear more from the, from central office and, and, you know, just figure out if there's anything that we could be, could be doing differently or better.
Ms. Garcia's phone died, I will be taking over the meeting, um, so, definitely, um, Roberto, let's send an email out to, um, talk about the E policy, and I just wanted to thank Valerie and Cecilia, I love when we have student reps and they come so eager, um, to talk and share, um, because it's really important to hear from you guys, and listening to Cecilia, if she is able to say all these wonderful things of our staff, is because she's having a positive experience in our schools, she's getting the support she needs to succeed, um, so I'm very happy to hear that, um, these are the kind of things, um, that we want to hear and we want to highlight, um, because there's always great things happening in our district, and sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle, so thank you, Cecilia, for sharing, and Valerie. Um, so, Dr. Beta, you still had your personnel update?
Enrollment. Okay. Just switching over. Okay, so here are our personnel updates, as you can see, we've had some new hires, um, still working on filling some of our paraprofessional positions that we've had posted for a while, and you can see here the demographics of our, um, new employees over here, fifty percent Caucasian, fifteen percent has fifty percent Hispanic, and then we have our resignations, retirements, and terminations here. Um, and then our promotions and transfers, and our leaves of absences, and then we have our, um, enrollment report, uh, I feel like every time I mention this, I think of, uh, Mr. Jimenez, we're on the, the numbers, and, uh, we are up to six thousand one hundred and seventy-one, so we're definitely, uh, pre-pandemic, we're about six thousand two hundred-ish, you know, it would depend on the week, go up and down, so we're back at six thousand one hundred and seventy-one students, so, um, back to where we started with our, um, enrollment, and these, this is all I have for the person that, for the personnel report and the enrollment report, I'd like to commend these two reports to the record, please.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Anyone has any questions on those two reports? So we're gonna move along, so, Dr. Beta, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I will wait for you to pull it, I know it's a committee report, so next we have the budget and finance, do we have a motion to accept those subcommittee minutes and commend them to the record?
Make a motion to accept them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move right along into new business. If you could just scroll up a little bit more, Dr. Beta, sorry, uh, that is good right there. So first, we have consideration and action to accept an increase of seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one for the Adult Education Services Grant for their intergenerational literacy program for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. So the state has increased funding for the district's adult education program by seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one for this year, these funds will be used predominantly for salaries and will be, and will provide an opportunity to expand the afternoon online ESOL family literacy services classes, funds may also be used for supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Under Mass Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven A, provides the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept an increase of seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars for the Adult Education Service Grant for the intergenerational literacy program for the tw- for the intergenerational literacy program for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
I'm sure Ms. Vales really misreading this out loud. Yes.
Brought me back home.
Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Alfaro? Okay, uh, Ms. Carlisle?
Yes. Sorry, I say yes.
Okay. Right, Ms. Vales?
Yes.
That's five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Next is consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage, wage schedules for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to establish additional middle school athletic coach positions and associated rates of pay. Explanation. Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly salary and coach positions. Our present staff are proposing that the school committee revise the pay schedule for athletic coaches. This change will add coach positions for additional middle school sports and will create a rate of pay assistant coach positions at the middle school level. Roll call.
Consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two to establish additional middle school athletic coach positions and associated rates of pay. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Vales?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Um, Dr. Beta, if you could move up a little bit. Okay, so that is good. Thank you. So consideration and action to accept a gift from the seven eleven store located at nine thirty-two, nine forty-six Broadway in Chelsea of items such as hand sanitizer and multipurpose wipes with an estimated value of three thousand four hundred for the Hooks Elementary School. The seven eleven store located at nine thirty-two, nine forty-six Broadway has generously offered to provide a gift of hand sanitizer and multipurpose wipes with an estimated value of three thousand four hundred. This donation will be made available to the Hooks Elementary School. So under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept a gift from the seven eleven store located at nine thirty-two, nine forty-six Broadway in Chelsea of items such as hand sanitizer and multipurpose wipes with an estimated value of three thousand four hundred dollars for the Hooks Elementary School. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Vales?
Yes.
That's five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. We're gonna move along to communications. There are no communications. Do we have any final announcements from our school committee or cabinet team? Ms. Carlisle?
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'd like to thank my colleagues for all those kind words they said about me. Twenty-seven years I've gone through twelve superintendents. And let me tell you, it wasn't easy. Everybody had their own personalities and everybody agreed and disagreed, but what we were doing is doing the best for all the students in the city of Chelsea. I am lucky to be retiring with this wonderful superintendent over there. Tell me, thank you. I don't wanna cry again, but I'm gonna miss you all. Be safe. I love you.
We're gonna miss you, Rosemary. Thank you, thank you for everything. Anybody else would like to say any words?
I'd like to have a moment of silence, please. Um, I don't know if everybody watches the news, but we've had some serious things going on in the schools throughout the country. This past week, it was out there in Michigan. We lost to some students. I think it was five. I would like to have a moment of silence for those students and their families. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. I just wanna say to everybody, happy holidays, um, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas. Um, I know that we'll have Kwanzaa after that. Um, any holiday that you celebrate. I just wanna wish you a very peaceful, healthy holiday season to everybody. Um, enjoy your time off, enjoy your family and friends and we'll see you back in January. And the other, Ms. Santiago?
Yes, thank you, uh, Ms. Vales. Uh, same, you know, to everybody, uh, I'm still a, a parent and a resident of the city of Chelsea. I just really wanna thank first and foremost, the Students for Your Trust and uh, Central Office for the opportunity to work with all of you um, in this role. Um, I also wanna thank the constituents of District Three um, for placing their trust in me as well and being able to serve our community in this capacity. Um, and yeah, I'm really proud of our student reps. It's, it's, it's gonna be hard to kind of exit in this way when we have like, as Ms. Vales said, um, great student reps that come and share and um, you know, are, are really uh, representing the student body in this way. So wish you both continued uh, success and um, to continue to do what you're doing because you're doing a great job. Um, and yeah, lastly, I just, you know, from the first moment, Ms. Albeta, from the search and hiring process with you and um, again, just how grateful and lucky we are to have you in this district. I'm just really grateful to you. Um, it's been really amazing to witness you um, lead our district in such, in such a challenging time and to do it in the way that you have. Um, just really grateful and honored as a mom of a little ten-year-old daughter. Um, and just as a, as a resident of this community, uh, the same to Mr. Delaney, um, Mr. Lovato, um, Ms. Lee, goodness, uh, All-Star, Rockstar. Um, and thank you so much, Veronica, um, for your support to the school committee as well and your support to me um, during my time here. And uh, yeah, to, to Ms. Monica Lambboy, queen of all things gray. Uh, her patience with my five million questions around parks, emergency management, like you're a boss. Thank you. And Mr. Jennings as well, um, to just be in your presence and such grace. Thank you all so much. I know our schools are in good hands. I look forward to seeing you all in the community one day or another, sometime soon. Um, and to Ms. Carlisle, thank you for your um, dedication and service as well to the school committee in this role. Um, yeah, merry holidays to everybody. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Mr. Jimenez, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, just, just really quickly, and I, I think everybody has said, uh, congratulations to, to Marisol and to Rosemary. Um, so I just, you know, wanna reiterate, um, thank you both for your service. Uh, um, you know, both the, the three years, I think, Marisol, um, and twenty-seven, right? Um, but also, you know, to everybody else, um, who is on this call and who, who has been with us, you know, the last two years have not been easy. Um, and some of us haven't been, uh, s- s- some of us were not here for the whole two, two years of the term. Um, uh, but, you know, we're really excited to have new folks um, on the team. Um, and hopefully the next two will be a lot easier, um, because we won't, you know, have the insane pandemic that we don't know when it's gonna end. Um, you know, hopefully, we, 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 we see, we see a light at the end of the tunnel at this point, hopefully. Um, and you know, somebody who's like anxiously, desperately waiting for the vaccine to be approved for the littlest ones, um, you know, I, I, I'm like almost, I, I almost see that, that light at the end of the tunnel. Um, so I, I also just wanna quickly mention, uh, Ms. Enriquez, Lucy Enriquez, who, you know, has been with the committee for, for a long time. Um, but she, you know, left us in, in July. Um, also wanna thank her for her service, um, since she won't be, uh, she may be with us come January. But uh, so right now, um, is not, uh, so yeah, just thank you, everybody, um, for all that you do. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. So, um, any further ado, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I would like a motion to adjourn for my last meeting.
I'll stick to that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carlisle.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Have a good night.
Merry holidays.